Let's see, which also then puts questions as to whether or not the 25-foot no disturbance zone is accurate as shown on the plan as well. Reviewing the DEP website, they show that or indicate that there are 10 square feet of land underwater alteration. The package that we received did not indicate any alteration of land underwater, so we were wondering whether or not there is any alteration to land underwater. Let's see. There are still several questions with respect to and outstanding issues with respect to the stormwater as designed for the site. I know that GZA is conducting a stormwater review for the planning board, and we reviewed their comment letter as well as the Board of Health agents' comment letter, and they both are requesting significant amounts of information before they can determine whether or not the project meets the stormwater standards. So, you know, the project may be significantly changed in order to meet those standards down the line. So the commission, we're recommending the commission wait until those issues have been addressed prior to being able to vote on this project. There are several questions regarding the plan, the plan's accuracy. I already described the wetland flags, but there are notes on the plan that say the property lines were compiled from plans, but they don't discuss what plans those, the property lines were compiled from. They state that mass GIS data was used to develop the plans with and supplemented by GPS surveys, so it's, we're wondering what was surveyed and what would, what comes from GIS because the accuracies of those are significantly different. I already discussed the wetland questions. We also have significant questions regarding the stream crossing. It's only shown in a time in the corner of the project plans without much detail. They do have a cross-section of the crossing, but it's unclear exactly where that crossing will be with respect to the bank, how it will be constructed, and it's located off-site. So those are all significant issues. It is located on the town of Dayton's property, so the town would have to be signed off on the NOI because the work is being conducted off-site. So those are kind of the big things. There are a couple of small things like requesting seed mixes, stuff like that, that I believe we've sent the applicant's representative. Would you like me to go through all of them?
What?
Would you like me to go through all of those with small details? Okay. There, on the plan, it doesn't show which areas will be cleared and grubbed. It just says, well, it just shows that it'll be cleared. There are areas that are outside of the fenced area that probably could, that probably don't require grubbing. So, you know, that's something that the commission could, could consider requiring, is that only grubbing be conducted within the fenced area. We're, there are stormwater management features being constructed within the 50-foot buffer to the wetland resource areas and a security fence being installed, and the Dayton bylaw requires that no structures be constructed within the 50 feet, within 50 feet of a wetland. And we're requesting that the specifications for the native seed mixes discussed in the NOI be provided to the commission. We're recommending the use of 18-inch compost-filled silt sock at the site because the area is, it's so large of a disturbance area that we don't believe that the nine-inch, I think they say sediment log on their specification will be adequate for the construction of this project. Portions of the erosion control boundary as shown on the plans is far within, or within the limit of work, so it really should be at the limit of work is where the location of the erosion control should be to protect the down gradient resource areas. The specifications on Sheet 4 have hay bale check dams. There's no locations on the plans of where those are going to be used, so we have a question as to where those are going to be used, and if they're going to be used within 100 feet of the wetlands, they shouldn't be hay bales, they should be straw bales because hay bales contain invasive seed, so we don't want to establish invasive, additional invasive species within the wetlands or within their buffer zones. And a formal maintenance plan of the stormwater facility should be submitted to the commission for any eventual activities down the line, including mowing, cleaning, repairing, how that will be done within the jurisdictional area so that the commission can approve that. So those are our comments thus far.
Good evening. My name is Chris King with Atlantic Design Engineers. We were just in receipt of this letter today, so we haven't had a lot of time to produce materials, but based on a cursory review of the letter, we're confident that providing additional information would satisfy most of these issues outlined by Ms. Kraus, I believe. You know, we've already contacted our wetland scientists, understand the flags do fall over a period of time. He's going to go out and rehang them, we'll resurvey them, we'll certainly provide information as far as the accuracy of the equipment. I do know that it's sub-meter. Every observation point is different depending on how much you know about surveying and GPS, but it's all post-processed after the fact, so it really depends on the number of epics you take at each location. So again, when we run around the ground as well in certain areas, we certainly do field checks on what we've GPSed, so we're confident that we'd be able to provide additional information, ascertaining that the flags depicted are accurate, and if any adjustments need to be made, we certainly are going to make them as outlined in the, in the comment letter. As noted, the stormwater, the stormwater design is being reviewed not only by GZA as part of Planning Board, but we are also going to need a stormwater permit through the Board of Health, and I have preliminary conversations with Todd, obviously, in receipt of his letter. So again, we're working on addressing those comments really within the fenced footprint that you see here. And speaking of which, again, not having a heck of a lot of time to look into it, but our initial interpretation was that the structure setback 50 feet specific to the wetland boundary was structures, and fronts were precluded from that. But again, you know, we'll certainly look into that and follow up accordingly. Most of the other stuff we're agreeable to, adjusting the erosion control line, implementing the 18-inch silt socks with the compost. Again, understanding I really don't have a heck of a lot to deliver to you this evening. I'm confident if there's any point in particular you'd like to, I'd need to speak to, I'd be more than happy to. But as far as the comments in general, you know, I'm confident that additional information provided will satisfy all of them. So I don't know, Florrie, if you have any questions or...
There was actually one other thing I remembered. In the front portion of the site, maybe it'll be easiest if I just point it out, this location here, it doesn't look like there's any work being conducted between the fence and the limit of clearing?
We're working on that. We're working on that as far as planning and we're working on that.
Okay, so that, so that might be decreased, the clearing? Okay. All right.
And speaking of the clearing and grubbing, we didn't make that discrepancy on the plan. We're currently working with also an email, I don't know if it's on record yet, but we're working on comments from the fire department to make sure that we provide access to the field within as long as closed real length, which is at 200 feet. So we're going to be showing that on our plan as far as planning. So we're trying to keep that contained within the fence to keep clearing and grubbing within the fence line. But again, that's, we're in the process of working that out, but we'll certainly make the definition of where we're clearing versus clearing and grubbing.
Okay, so you, you're going to be requesting the continuance?
I mean, I think that's appropriate at this time again. I didn't have, yeah, I think that additional information would certainly satisfy these requirements and so...
Okay, so our next meeting...
I'll make a motion that we continue until 10:10. That's our next meeting.
And since I am the only other person, I'll second that. Oh, in favor, aye. Okay, continue until October.
October 10th, I believe it is. And then Florrie, do you have contact information from the people from Goddard?
I do. I copied Tom from Goddard on that.
Okay, will we rehang them and resurvey them? Do you want to see them after we rehang them, before we survey them, just in case there's any adjustment, just in the interest of time?
Sure, yes, that probably makes more sense.
Okay, so I'll have them let you know, and then you guys can hammer out the actual location, and we can survey and then work on all the rest of the information.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it open to the public?
Do you ask him any questions or no?
Right now, he can't answer any questions. The same thing that we had last meeting is that he had 7:30? We had our consultant make a review?
Yes, I understand all that. I'm, I understand that. I was just trying to see if he's making adjustments pertaining to her report, does that adjustment include moving that construction road to the south any, or is he still going to be 25 feet onto the property line, which is about 75 feet from my house? That's what I, I thought maybe he'd have an answer, but...
That's probably best addressed with the planning board. They have to work on the plan first, and then conservation will...
All right, the water runoff from that path?
Stick it in the hole. But eventually it will come to conservation, but planning will have to address it first.
Okay, so it's, so if you're here for that, it's continued to the 10th, and he's going to have replies to Nova Armstrong, to our consultant. Yep.
Is that at 7:30?
7:30. Okay, we have abbreviated an investment tent by John Duvalley of AMS Home Builders. That was a continuation until this meeting, and Nova Armstrong also did work out there to, to do a review of the site.
Is it, are we talking about Lot 6 and 7 or Lot 4?
Lot 4.
Lot 4, okay. So we reviewed the wetland boundaries on Lot 4 and generally found that the wetland flags were okay in the field. There were for Lot 4, we did have a question about the fact that the plan doesn't show any topography. That's something that the commission can request. It's not specifically required, but if you would like to see it, that is something you could request. The plan also doesn't include a survey benchmark, and the plan notes that are on that plan appear to reference parcel 6 and 7, so plan notes on that plan might need to be updated. Specifically, the A series BBW boundary, we found all the flags and had no problems with the flags. We did however observe a vernal pool within that area. We also found bylaw-defined vernal pools in the B series and C series isolated wetlands. The riverfront area boundary was confirmed in the, or the mean annual high water flags were confirmed in the field to determine the riverfront area boundary, however, the river extends further north, but the, it would have no impact on the eventual, whatever's going to happen out on the site because it's well within the BBW boundary, so I assume that's why he stopped flagging. But we do think that there should be a note on the plan and reference in the order that there are additional resources on the site that are, that have not been flagged. We, our biggest finding out there was about the vernal pools. Those need to be added to the plans. The definition of vernal pools under the bylaw extends from the 100, from the mean annual high boundary 100 feet, and then there's an additional 100-foot buffer off of that. So those need to be shown on the plans. The ANRAD plan should be stamped by a PLS, and how the boundaries, how the resource area boundaries were located should be noted on the plans. And those were our findings with regards to Lot 4.
Will you come back with new maps showing the vernal pools and their jurisdiction? And how many vernal pools?
Three.
Three. And the last thing that you had said was the...
We want the ref, we want to know how they located the flags. We want to note on the plan of how they located the flags and the accuracy of that location, and we want the plan stamped by a professional Lancer Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with these requests, except for I'd like to object to the requirement of having to do topography. I don't think it's necessary. It's a big expense at this time.
At this time?
We'll be doing it for the NOIs, but I'd rather, I don't, you know, ANRAD's normally, they regularly come in without topo, and if they agree with the flag locations, then we have the extents. And when the topo gets put on with the NOI, it's going to show everything. That's a lot of land to be doing topo on. When they're going to, what they're going to do is concentrating ANR lines.
It would be nice to get it signed by Lancer Mayor.
It was. That's the other thing I want to mention, it was. There was a stamp in signature.
Plans that we have don't have that, so if you could just send us a copy of those then?
No problem.
Okay, so you're, you will adjust it for the vernal pools then?
Yeah, we'll find, we'll, we'll flag out the mean high water, the vernal pools, and we'll do all the other requests that she had as well.
Okay. Any questions there? Anything for the audience?
The surveying, has it been done already?
Yes.
Okay, and the flag is 10 feet onto my property.
That, well, the wetland delineator goes before the surveyor, and nothing's marked at that time, so, so walking onto someone else's property is a common occurrence, unfortunately. It's not intentional.
Oh, no, 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 I have no problem with that.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's on the plans for my property, it's stone walls on two, on both sides. Both sides. There's stone walls of this tall, but you're 10 feet into, into, over our, onto our property. We live at 622, I said 622. The first, first house, and, you know, we have replaced and put it where the wall is.
Okay.
And that, that right there should probably show our property with walls on both sides.
We put a log, when we were, when the town was doing their water on our street, we asked them if they didn't mind, they could, if they wanted, they could have put the fill on that so they, we can just use it there, and they put a log across it so nobody could get back in there, so we, we knew what was going on.
Are we talking about 6 and 7 or Lot 4?
4.
Lot 4, right, so...
So we're on the...
Looking, looking at the piece of property, you're through this left piece of property.
Yeah, I don't know what the number is.
This is the other?
Wait, is this, are we talking about Lot 4? With, this is...
We don't know what lot number or what there is.
This is the one on Maple Swamp, on the north side of Maple Swamp.
Okay, so you're on the opposite side.
That's Maple Swamp, we're on Maple, we're on...
Oh, okay, so we're on the other side.
Okay.
Oh, that's, yeah, you're away.
We're going to open to you.
Nothing being, which one you're talking about.
You're talking about, so we aren't sure what lot that was, that's why.
We'll, we'll get to that one here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we will have to continue that until we get the new mapping, and Jack, looking for a motion?
I think motion, we can send it, probably makes me get the rest of the papers on it.
Which is when?
10th.
In a second?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we're dealing with Lots 6 and 7. Same scenario.
So we reviewed the BBW boundary as flagged out in the field and had no problems with the flags that we found, however, there were a few that we couldn't find, and a couple that are located offsite that can't be confirmed by the ZANRAD. I think it was, yeah, A1 and A2 we couldn't find, and maybe those are the two that were in that area potentially.
A1's where it started, and that might have been on the wrong side of the stormwall.
Okay, yeah, so that, that's probably...
It really doesn't matter then.
Yeah, we can't end up confirming that, but we, we would need to look at it just to determine the boundary, so we can, I don't know if you, we can't rehang it out in the field, but...
They're probably located by survey.
Survey, okay.
Well, which would be a main, it's on the plan.
Okay.
Yep.
The other, the only other, well, there are additional resource areas on the site. There is a mapped perennial stream that flows from the south to the north. The way that it's depicted on the USGS topo map, the thick blue line that is used to determine the perennial stream stops with, when it hits the wetland, and then it starts back again further north on the property. Random, I'm sure you got that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then swamp, and then picks up again right here, right at the...
It goes right through to Lot 4. No, 6 and 7.
No. Oh, it goes from 6, yeah, it goes right to Lot 4.
To, okay.
Correct.
We looked at that stream from where it's mapped perennial and found a channel that goes all the way through the wetland, so it's our opinion that, that the stream continues and that the mean annual high should be delineated because riverfront area does exist on the site.
Should be shown on the...
And it should be shown on the plan, yes.
I might object to that, but I need to do some more research. It doesn't, it's not shown as a blue line, I don't, I don't know what judicatory or other decisions have been made in similar situations, but it doesn't sit right with me that you'd have to flag all the way through when it's not even a blue line shown. So I'm going to do some more research on that. I'm not necessarily objecting at the time, but I'm, I may object in the future. Of course, that being said, if I were to determine that the extent of the riverfront area doesn't even, even affect any proposed development, I'll probably just flag it and defer, you know, defer. But that's only if it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Well, I...
And save the fight for another day.
For next month.
We'll see. I've never had a situation quite like this before.
I would never be personally there.
Right, so, so they've never seen it, I've never seen it, they have their opinion, they're working on this one side, I'm working on the other side, so I'm going, I'm going to look into it.
And we're referees.
That's right.
There you go.
That's right.
Okay, is there anything else?
We, similar comments to the last one, put a comp, or a note on the plan stating that bank to, bank and land underwater exists on the site, that the plan that we, that we have be stamped by a PLS and then have a circulation in the order of research, in the ORAD stating that bank, land underwater, and riverfront area may exist at the site but are not depicted on the plan or...
No, no, no vernal pools.
No vernal pools on that site, no.
That's good.
We looked. But yeah, that was all we found on this one.
Okay. Any questions? Jack?
No, no, I'm not sure.
Request to continue.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue. Are they all right with it? No, you keep it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Are your bodies all right with it?
Sorry, just motion to continue?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Brooklyn Engineering wanted to talk about the Brook Street lot that we have in a cross mine, but I don't see Mr. Berrybe here tonight.
Hit in the car.
Oh, that's why I can't see him. He's next on the agenda.
You're sitting tonight, Brandon, or are you...
Well, I've got involvement with this one, I think I'm going to stick around and listen to Mr. Berrybe speak.
You're set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the one, okay, this is the, the running trees and riverfront and...
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
You can see the boundaries.
It's really wet back there.
Okay.
The whole lot is, it's laying, subject to flood, coastal junk land, so keep an eye on that.
All set?
All set.
Mr. Berrybe, Brooklyn Engineering, representing Tony Rodriguez. Brandon, as he said, is here in the audience, the resource areas, we're flying by Brandon. We located them with survey equipment. This, the lot in question, odd-shaped lot, highlighted in bold, runs at the corner of Brook Street and Elm Street, the back portion of it runs down to the Segregance River. What Brandon installed were four flags at the monument property off the river, identified and showed them in blue. Then he also installs four flags which delineate the wetland lines. From the flags, I'm showing the 100-foot setback to the wetlands, I'm also showing the 200-foot, the 200-foot's in orange, the yellow is the wetland.
Agreed.
Yeah, for the riverfront line, so those are the resource areas associated with that. He also identified an area on the property up in the front, isolated, isolated wetlands. Yes, it is. So we located that, there's also seven flags there, pretty much makes a circle, so we located them also. We did do a land survey of the property to define the perimeter of the property. We also located remnants of the existing foundation here, existing well here, and as requested, this line that you see here represents the limit of the clearing. He came in from the street and then cleared this area. So that's, I think that that pretty much shows what's going on with the piece of property. I did speak with Charlie today because I wanted to know how the board handled the isolated wetland areas, so he brought me up to speed on that. So that's where we stand.
This is strictly an informational reading, correct?
Correct, yeah.
When I was in there, because that was already several months back, I haven't been Of course, the vegetation and everything else have been totally disturbed by other cutting, and if we're going to do anything, we should have maybe, you know, Rob Stone going there again and take a look at this site.
The build of the area is outside the riverfront area, but the whole lot is, is laying, subject to stone, coastal stone块, but that doesn't prevent you from building a house there.
So what does that, what does that mean, to have to be raised, elevated on stilts or...
Yeah, you'd have to follow whatever the buildings, the elevator... Yeah, you'd have to follow whatever the buildings, the elevations, fifteen feet. I don't know if the elevations are 15 feet there or not.
I'd have to check and see. We did set a GPS point here in the corner, I don't have it show on the plan, but based on it, we'd have to abide by the lower requirements.
If you want to submit a notice of intent for the property, that's, is right. I don't see any problems, except that it's not a very nice piece of land, but that's, I'm not gonna let you have it.
They live five houses down, but like he picks the bus appointment, you know, like pop there for 10 minutes, everyone.
You know, I would, you know, with the filing of a notice on a tent, that's probably the time to lift the enforcement order at that time to see what's gonna be done.
Well, the enforcement order was.
Well, he did cut within the wetlands there, so.
I don't know if he cut within the wetlands or not, I know where he cut.
He said right here, this is, this is the cut line.
Okay.
So.
He didn't clear that hole, he just started.
Yeah, I guess the guy was cutting it, because it was after the fact with us. So I know that.
We issued the enforcement order to stop cutting, they stopped cutting.
Yeah.
Allowed them to pick up the wood, and that's done. If there's any further activity there, issue another enforcement order. But I'm not opposed to lifting it.
Do we have a motion to lift it?
I'll make a motion that we lift the enforcement order on lot.
Lot three oh two.
Three oh two on Brook Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No. Lot, yeah, you're all set. Lot, Lot fourteen, you can leave it at one, you can leave one anyway.
Okay.
Lot fourteen's another matter.
Yeah, well, that was the one we were gonna go on, okay? We have two here, okay, so let's do, when you're all set, we'll do Lot fourteen.
This is your site on Lot fourteen on Main Street. You haven't, you haven't removed the debris, that, whatever, it's still there. Actually, you added the piece, there's some fresh.
You asked me to remove the piles, I removed the piles, that's what I moved. You asked me to remove the stone, I removed the stone. You want me to keep going now, I'll go down. The pile that's left there is the stuff that was in the bottom.
I didn't see anything removed.
You didn't see anything removed?
No, nothing.
I can show you.
I probed, I probed through the soil that's there, and I hit rocks, just about everywhere that I probed. So the rocks are still there.
The rocks ain't really moved.
Well, I didn't bring the shovel with me.
I'll show you, I'll show you all the rocks I've taken out.
Well, if you took the rocks out, the dirt would have gone here. The dirt is still there, the rocks have to be still there.
Wait, what are they?
You gotta scrape it off back to the wet meadow.
I mean, there's no question that it's a wet, wet area. It's not the normal kind of wetland that you deal with.
Am I gonna have any problem if I go in?
Swamps and trees, what, those sedgees?
You're gonna remove it.
The sedgees are that tall, I mean, they're not hard to look at.
What's that?
Sedge, the sedge that comprise a wet meadow. They're in abundance, more than 50 percent.
They're growing right back from where it grew all around.
They're trying to grow back over the area you filled too.
I'll remove it, it's all the way.
And to insult the injury, you had a little pile next to William Street, and you pushed that in there too. I saw it fresh today, that wasn't there before.
I removed that pile, if you want me to move it down further, I'll move it down further.
It's in the same wetland area that the rest of it is, but it's new. I can't see lifting the enforcement order on that because I believe that it hasn't been addressed correctly.
So you want me to go back in there and take it down?
To the wet meadow, to the original soil.
A lot of that soil is still in the pile, I could spread that through there.
But the rocks are, you have to get all the rocks out and all the.
Get the rocks out, the rocks are out, I mean, I'll go back, look for some more rocks, but I don't wanna be told that I'm in a wet meadow, you know what I mean? You want me to go around there digging out more rocks, I'll go in there, dig out more rocks, but there's rocks all over that place.
You're gonna monitor this, him going down to the.
I wasn't really involved in that piece of property.
Oh, I see, okay.
I think it would be somebody more qualified, like a botanist or something.
I just see Proline here, you just asked for it to be on.
Yeah, and I mean, if Charlie, probably his opinion as far as a botanist, Brandon, somebody, you know, so that everybody can agree on something, but as far as me.
The original plan that was submitted for the three houses you've already got there shows clearly that that was delineated as a wetland.
I'll say it was, it's a wet meadow.
Hasn't changed.
It's wet.
Except that you put rocks down and then put soil on top of the rocks. That's what you're getting the enforcement order for.
I just stockpiled rocks there to make the walls. I was in a position to get the rocks, and I got the rocks, and I just.
But then you graded all that over on top of the wet meadow?
No, I didn't. I removed the rocks, and that was the jet, it was in the rocks. But I can, I can remove it.
Okay.
I can remove it, there's no problem.
Okay. That's what we've been waiting for, and we know that you've had your.
Yeah, that's ours.
You know, so we didn't want, so we let things.
I just saw no problem going back into the machine, that's all.
Not, not to clean it out?
Okay.
Okay, so we're, enforcement order will continue on Main Street.
William, yeah, that's William.
You're gonna get the enforcement order lifted on Brook Street? And that's, and you're done, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's go on to our next order of business. Dennis Duatt, enforcement order. I had visited the site up on the railroad tracks, and it was as, no brush, everything had been cleaned out, completely cleaned.
Oh, you can actually walk down the railroad tracks now?
Yeah. Yeah, and DEP said that any activity whatsoever has to come with a filing. That cleaning the brush, that, I'm gonna call it the grubbing machine, I don't, that might be the wrong word. But when I saw that thing going through and taking out all the brush, it's like a park down there. And I'm sure it looked very nice to Mr. Duatt to say, hey, I got a park down there. But being part of the riverfront and part of the national historic area.
A lot of that was cleared to begin with.
A small part, there was a small part, I'm going to give you on that. But this is probably an acre in size, that's cleared out. Are you Duatt, or no? He was supposed to let that, let that grow back. His engineer, botanist that sent us the letter, said it was gonna be permitted to grow back. It's, it's been.
The riverfront area only extends 200 feet from the bank of the top river, not all the way up to the railroad tracks.
That's all flood plain, that's, I mean, it's only about two feet above the, above the high tide, the whole area.
Okay. But if he leaves it the way it is now, that's okay.
I think a lot of it should be permitted to grow back down. Keep a piece free, but, you know, I. When I saw it, it reminded me of Dayton Rock State Park.
Well, that's not a bad thing.
I, no, it's copy, no, but it was area.
And that's right in the riverfront area.
That was done before the.
I don't think so.
I'd like to have him come in here.
Well, that's fine, we can send him a letter, I think, to, a day before the commission, explain, you can explain what.
Why it hasn't, why it hasn't let it grow, why it's been mowing it down when, you know, it's like a park with swings and picnic tables and.
It may be the riverfront area, but it is his backyard. And, you know, I really can't fault the guy for having a nice clean backyard. And mother nature, if he stops mowing, will just take care, take care of the rest. That's just my.
Yeah, well.
I mean, I know that we, we're empowered to protect wetlands and riverfronts and isolated wetlands, and after a while, I mean, a little common sense comes in.
I just remember seeing that machine down there, just showing up.
Yeah, but he hasn't brought the machine back down there again, otherwise he's still mowing with the machine, you have no idea.
Maybe, maybe with a mowing, a different mowing machine, maybe with a tractor or some smaller tractor. You know, a lawnmower of some sort.
Well, you know.
I mean, it's trimmed.
There is an exemption to the Wetland Act for mowing with lawnmowers in your backyard.
But for clearing it and then mowing.
Well, the clearing is in the past, the mowing is in the future.
That's why he got the enforcement order for the clearing.
For the clearing, he stopped clearing.
But didn't let it grow back where he cleared.
We'll have to get his opinion.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
That'd be the fair thing to do.
That's fine with me.
So, you want me to send him a letter?
Yes.
Saying he appeared at 10:10, and we're lying this right out.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, I make a motion that you allow me to send a letter to Mr.
To Duatt.
Yeah, Duatt.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we get into the nitty gritty.
Notice of intent by RMM Industries to replace a failed septic system with a new Title V system. What is the address of this?
160 Main Street.
160 Main Street.
Can you see it?
Bring it a little closer.
Yeah, see, maybe one will be down that way.
Is anybody here for this, Terry?
There you go, put it right in front there.
Look at that.
Okay, record great Nicholas Post Engineering for RMM Industries, property 160 Main Street, existing three bedroom home. A septic and overflow septic, both of which are in failure, proposing to replace this with a new Title V septic system. Just went to the Board of Health, Board of Health about two hours ago, and it was approved. So what we have here for resource areas, we have BVW on the very north side of the property, right at the back line, if you will. We're 53.8 feet away from the BVW, which should be great if that's all it was, that'd be an RDA, but we're also in land septic to ocean storm flowage, which necessitates the NOI. So with no requirements for land septic to ocean storm flowage other than the filing, what we're doing here for protection of the BVW is a silt sock is shown on the plan, which would be there to limit any, or actually control any sort of sedimentation that may run off during construction. We're talking about raising the grade of the existing property at the backside, about a foot and a half over here, we're actually matching existing grade elevation to seven. So it's a pretty straightforward septic repair for this type of system. No questions from the commission?
I don't know.
No, no, we've done dozens of them.
I'm sure you have, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the septic repair, issue an order of conditions.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, you waited a long time, let's see.
I gotta ask you guys one question, how long have you been on as commissioner? You were here on our first time.
Yes, I've been here a long time, he was Ronald Smoove's right hand man.
That, yeah, probably 20 years ago?
So, okay, I've been on since 75.
He's been a member of the board, you've been before.
You gotta get a hundred records.
How long, right? How long you?
Seventy-four, seventy-three.
Maybe seventy-two?
Or maybe seventy-two, okay. Yeah, we had the oldest sitting board in the state.
Yeah.
You gotta have the record, the longest time. I remember when your mother was on.
Jack's mother was a regional conservation commission.
Yeah, she, she, she owned. That'd have been back.
Bill's been on longer than I have.
Really?
That's right, a year, maybe, two, I don't know.
Well, you got to figure it out.
I'm one of the new guys.
Public servants, man.
Yeah. Most people do the public service, can't wait to get on, what do I sign up for this? Yeah, thank you very much.
John, turn.
This is an RDA.
Yep.
Five paw four hour.
This is all longer.
It's a failed septic system. Oh, wait, we didn't, we didn't get his, did we get his cards?
Excuse me?
Yeah, he gave them to me earlier.
Okay, all right, we're all set.
You're all set? Okay. You gave him your.
Blue, green card.
Your green cards, your registered mail? Yeah. You gave him the registered mail cards? Yeah, I gave him the card.
Okay.
Another failed septic.
Yeah.
Yeah, another failed septic, this is.
Which, which won't care that we passed the way, about a week and a half.
Oh.
Oh, seriously?
I'm serious.
Really, I didn't do it?
Yeah, Paul, that.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Steve Gilbert for SFT Engineering. An RDA for septic repair on 2125 Maple Street. It's a failed septic, failed septic pool. We've got a wetland.
How old is that thing, septic?
They built a house?
Yeah, but that's gotta be.
That's a trailer, right?
Yeah, it's a trailer.
A long time ago.
A trailer, yeah.
We've got wetlands to the right of the property that extend behind the property. So what we're doing is we're tucking the septic system, we're bringing a new septic tank and a pumping chamber, we've got a high water table, so we're gonna have to elevate the system unfortunately, and we're gonna tuck it in the front left corner of the property to keep it as far away from the wetlands as we can. We're moving it as far as we can to the left side, but maintaining 100 feet from our butt as well, that's why we can't go any further. Getting to about, I believe, 25 feet from the, from the property line, but again, we're staying away from their well.
Okay, Board of Health has this as well?
Yes, yes, Board of Health has it.
Now, have they given approval?
I believe so, yeah, I believe so.
Well, I mean, I just, looking at, because, so they, they will question two of the 100 foot buffer between the well and the septic.
Correct, well, we're keeping, we're maintaining the 100, yes. That's why we're not going any further, further from the wetlands. So as we're constructing this, as we're, as we're designing this, at the closest points of the wetlands, we're about 83 feet from the leaching area, and with the surrounding grading, it gets to, the grading gets to within about 68 feet from the BVW. They're getting rid of the old well behind the property that's close to the wetlands, and they're gonna tie into the town water. The Board of Health wanted, wanted us to do that, so.
Okay. Well, that gives you a little playroom too, with the well dismantled.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
Or would they use that for irrigation?
No, I believe.
They have, they have to get rid of it.
Yeah, Board of Health want to get rid of it, because this ties into a tributary to water supply. So that's why the Board of Health strongly recommended that we do that.
Okay, so replace it, prevent septic, wipe out existing well and install service line to town water.
Correct. Correct, and we're running a filtration barrier between the house and the road to protect the wetlands.
This is true, the wetlands and the last we just dealt with.
Yeah, I mean, it's as far as we can with the, with the flooding well.
Yeah.
I mean, we're tucking it as far as we can.
You got green cards, right, you just gave him green cards?
No, I gave him, we don't need green cards, so this is an RDA.
Oh, okay, all right, I was just, all right.
Yeah, that list was part of the application.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody here, any questions, Jack?
No.
I mean.
Nothing for me? Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we issue determination of applicability, allowing the.
A negative determination.
A negative determination of applicability, yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
It's important.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need these pens, or do you have copies?
You got the copies, Charlie? You got maps, right? You're all set?
Yeah, it's different.
This should be the folder, okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Yeah, right down to these.
Wow, gee, another, notice of intent by Aspen Properties. Hey, we woke them up.
It's another fair one.
Repair a, a complete subsurface. Repair a complete subsurface sewer disposal system 272 Main Street.
It's located right next to...
This is a notice of intent, so you got, yeah, green cards notifying our barons?
Yep, I believe we also submitted certified mail receipts when we submitted the plans. But I do have, I do have the green cards here. We didn't get all, I believe we got them all back. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. But I know you've got...
You're here for this?
No, I'm here for certificate of compliance with 304 Main Street.
Oh, okay, all right, you're the, you're the next on the agenda.
I hope so, tonight.
These are the ones we do.
Okay.
For the right kids, Stevie Caballo from Farland Court, representing Aspen Properties and Investments LLC, basically. We were at Board of Health earlier today. They approved the septic. It's repair of an existing septic system. We have no real idea of where the existing septic system is.
I mean, it's a pipe that goes somewhere.
Somewhere, right. That'll be abandoned, cut and capped because we're putting in a... They're redoing all the plumbing and elevating the pipe coming out, the sewer pipe coming out of the house.
272, give me a...
Church here, fire station here.
Okay, all right, okay.
Make this a secret.
Yeah, okay, no?
So, for resource areas, we have a boring vegetated wetland in the rear and we're also in a flood zone. This is a 100-foot buffer to the wetland. As you can see, just about the entire property is in the buffer zone. We are limited in where we can put our septic system. There's an open bottom culvert here, which basically intercepts groundwater and drains it in this direction. So we can't put a septic system here. We're essentially just limited to that front right corner. The leaching field itself is outside the hunt, I mean, outside the 50-foot buffer. However, the tank is within the 50-foot buffer and it's about 39 feet away from the wetland.
But the tank doesn't discharge into any closure? It discharges further away?
Yep, that's correct. We did ask Board of Health for some variances in the setback. They granted those. System is gonna have an previous barrier around it. We're providing some erosion controls just kind of between the existing stone wall and the house here. Nothing really being, taking place on this side here.
Are there any questions?
Oh, I mean, you know, careful, hopefully.
It's his turn to make a motion.
Okay, motion by Charlie to approve?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So we'll issue an order of conditions for it.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Something else is going on Main Street. Might as well get this guy matched, don't you?
Lot going on on Main Street.
Well, there are three of them.
At least this one's all done, so...
Yeah, right.
Okay, we have, we've got to sign the certificate of compliance.
You don't, oh, yeah, I signed it.
We got it there?
We got it, yep. Just look at the compliance for...
While the construction...
Actually, a little further up, 304 Main Street.
Right next to the fire department.
On the other side.
Looking at the fire department, right to the next house to the left.
Going west.
But there's no reason why we shouldn't issue a certificate of compliance. They've sent some beautiful pictures for this. I mean, that looks nice. Everybody should do that. This is the septic repair. It's all fenced off, it's all covered over. It's perfect. All it needs now before is the same.
Well, we'll keep those pictures, though.
Yeah, that's part of the application.
Now, this has to be notarized?
Uh, no. There's no more notaries for what we do. That's not years ago.
Okay, so if we, if you sign it... I don't, no, there's no more duplicating machines down there. I was gonna say, we could...
Once it's signed, I just...
I think I have another copy here if you want to sign two and keep one.
It's in the original to the applicant and the rest to...
But I'm saying if he's here, we can give it to him...
No, because I need to make copies. I need to send a copy to, I'll send it certified mail.
All right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
No problem.
Okay, so you're signing...
We used to have a copying machine down here, but it's all gone.
Budgets, you know?
We get new chairs.
You're gonna be over next building when it's finished. Copy machines have been removed over there. There were three offices down here. And, no, two, and they're all over next to the Old Town Hall. So we're gonna be upstairs.
Got it. All right. So you guys will just mail that to me and...
I'll get it, I'll put it in the mail by the, before the end of the week.
All right, appreciate it. Okay, have a good night.
Yeah, he called me and said that he had left a certificate of compliance with this settlement. I never saw it. So I asked him to email me a copy of the request and he did.
Okay, so they're trying to tax us, huh, on that?
Uh, let's see, since you're the chairman tonight...
Okay, you want me to sign the invoice?
I don't, I'm not sure what account we're gonna take out of it, but I'm saying the...
Oh, Mac Dukes?
Yeah, sign them both.
Okay.
And we did get a tax bill.
Oh, you want me, you want me to sign it above or below?
Sign it wherever you feel like it. Just two other flyer. Get that shade right up there with that nice big round top.
How's the D? Is the D gonna tell?
The D, you're good with the D. I tried copying your handwriting, I said, oh, man, no way. Too good.
Over here, Tom?
Jack's nice, he's got a nice slanted, old-fashioned...
Well, Bill always have to do for Bill is just shaking it.
No, no, I can almost make it as good as he can. As long as I'm looking at his signature.
Okay, sign over here, Tom?
Yeah, you gotta sign that, too. Bill always forgets to sign the bill itself. Once I find out what... That's all part of the...
Okay.
And now we have... I could have...
Are you, are fats from...
Yeah, back from the January 4 river. And I had been dealing with the engineer, the P E, that sent the request. I told her that we couldn't honor it. You can see why when I read my email response. You've got one of these.
Oh, really, and I get that?
I printed all this stuff and get it.
Oh, here it is, okay. No, that was my, the last one. I read everything else, that was the last thing I didn't read. Okay, I'll stick on that.
I spend so much time on the computer. Now, to get back to the base of the story, we issued determinations of applicability to lot 95 and 94. I believe 94's already got a house on it and there's no problem. 95, didn't bother to file it. Didn't do that. I mean, it was issued in 2006. But it's part of the Hunter's Hill project and the Hunter's Hill order conditions said that every lot that is within a wetland or a buffer needed to be addressed with a determination of applicability. We issued a determination with conditions.
Okay, so what they have to do is put in the permanent markers?
Yep.
And that's all they have to do?
Yep. I mean, the house is there, but there's no sense worrying about the house anymore. But if we're supposed to put the markers and they should put the markers.
Yep.
Apparently, the new owners of Hunter's Hill never look at it. Nobody looks at orders of conditions anymore.
No.
Just go ahead and do it the hell you want.
Well, they, no one knows how to read. All they do is how to text, shut hand.
I don't know what Tony removed from there. And he must have picked up a few stones and thrown off to the side because those big boulders that he laid down in the wet meadow, it's still there.
The last time, the last time I went by, they were just laid out on top of that field and it might, it might be a foot thick. Maybe more, I don't know.
If he took the rocks out, the dirt would have to come out with it, wouldn't it? Okay, that's, I risk my case.
But underneath that, there's going to be, of course, dead grass now, or dead...
It won't be dead for long.
Dead, no, not for long. It'll come right back. And it's, but he's gonna come to that layer. He's gonna scoop that whole layer out and, which is gonna be a foot. He's gonna, he's gonna have probably 20, 30 yards of material in there, to help. I don't know either exactly.
The machine is gonna do it, so you won't even read it this way. Next?
Okay.
We have to sign that. Me, just where it says commission.
Under...
I didn't get this on the agenda, but do you remember dealing with Mrs., Mr. Fisher? Pleasant Street. They had dumped logs, in a log in his backyard.
Behind the ball field.
Yes, extends right down to Water Street.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now she sent the letter, she wants to cut brush. Can you please advise if I can trim the invasive plants in the field behind my house? It's a bog. It shouldn't be in there to begin with. I didn't reply to her, I just wanted to bring it up. These same invasive reeds are on the bank of the river. Could I either trim them or remove them with a bobcat? No, and no.
They're having some issues with people trespassing on that piece on Water Street. They've put up no trespassing signs. And I know they're trying to make sure the police are allowing people to comply. People launching, there's a little, I think, right next to where Joe Lawrence owned. Putting boats and paddle boards and kayaks and stuff in there. You'll see that little opening if you drive down there.
On, okay, just north of Centennial, by Centennial Park?
Correct.
Oh, yes, okay.
Maybe, maybe like 75, 80 yards.
Yeah.
You'll see if you drive down there.
Well, isn't that town, isn't that town property?
Centennial Park is, but that piece, I don't believe so.
But the, the street, the water, the river comes up and touches the street.
I think that's debatable.
It might extend over the road, I don't know.
The water comes up pretty high there.
It's right over the road.
And the high water mark's pretty high there, but... So I think between that and the easement from the town, you know, it's probably not a question.
As far as the reeds, I mean, you cut them, you can cut them forever, they're gonna grow back as fast as you cut them. If it makes her happy, I mean, she can cut them, but...
But not, you don't wanna, you don't wanna bobcat in there because she's gonna be all...
Not bobcat, no, she wanted to do it by hand. I can trim the invasive, trim, trimmed is trimmed. Bobcats, different.
Yeah, no, just, it would be safe to say no.
No.
Okay, you finished?